Okay, so we're back in public. It's 6:57 PM and I'm looking for a motion to steal the minutes of our non-public session.
So moved.
Okay, the motion is by Ms. Brown.
Second.
I can invite Ms. Oden, sorry, there's motorcycle. Mr. Guarino, can you please take the role?
Okay, Raymond Guarino votes yes. Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Jennifer Bishop?
Yes.
Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Heather Raymond?
Yes.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
And Gloria Timmons? Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. All right, so this evening, we have just a couple of kind of housekeeping type things. I don't have the agenda in front of me, so I'm going to wing it because I can't get into my email right now. Dr. Mosley?
There's just one agenda item that's here. It's just board in-person and out-of-person.
Okay.
The only other agenda item that's on the table here.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Dr. Mosley. So regarding whether or not we want to meet in-person, we had voted last month to begin our in-person board meetings in October. And since that time, a couple of things have happened. We have two members who have some medical issues which will make them potentially unavailable to meet in public. We have our middle and high schoolers potentially being remote until January. And we have some complications with the tech that is used to broadcast our meetings being available to us October 13th, since the aldermen are still meeting remotely. So I guess the question is, do we still have enough members available to meet in public? Or is it even viable at this point to meet in public if we're having some issues with ETV being able to have their equipment there? So would anyone like to participate in a discussion on that topic? Ms. Bishop?
I think the not having the tech piece is a pretty big component. And if we're able to meet in-person or not, unless there's another place we can go or available, another available situation that we could be successful in. But if we obviously can't broadcast, then the answer is kind of right there, huh? That was it, that's my piece of the discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. In the past, we've met in the boardroom at Central Office, but it's not large enough for us to socially distance and also have a camera person in there. I have Ms. Brown.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we're under a legal obligation to televise the meetings. So even if we didn't have the tech in place, as long as we can safely social distance and provide notice ahead of time for the meetings and all of the public locations and also the minutes after the meetings, I don't think we are legally bound to live broadcast.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I think we need to get back into our boardroom and get these meetings going. It's, the Zoom is crazy now. If we don't show the public that we're willing to get out there, then it's no good. If we can go out shopping, if we can go to the post office, if we can go eating out, then our duty and our obligation is to be out there for members of the board to be accessible to the public, even if we have to social distance with a mask on. And I mean, I think a lot of the problems with the parents are so frustrating is because it's all Zoom and they, you know, it's great if we can broadcast, but they can't come to any live meetings and speak with us and we can hear their concerns. They wear a mask, they social distance, we wipe off the microphone, we get a microphone cover. I mean, like I've said to people, I've been back to work since the end of May with a mask on. So I mean, it's time that we get out and we show the public that we're there, we're there for them and we can listen to their concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Timmons, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I kind of resent that statement. Actually, I do go to the grocery store, I do go to the post office. I am not going into no boardroom where I do not trust how many people can go into the boardroom. I can control what I do when I'm outside. I cannot control what I do inside a boardroom. I think it's crazy to go back into a boardroom and I will not do it. So going to the post office is a mute point. Going to the restaurant is a mute point. I'm outside when I go to a restaurant. I go into the post office, I walk right back out. So I resent, and so I say, well, you can go to the post office, you can do this. No, I can't. I will not be in a room with, for hours, sitting in hours. You know, these meetings are four or five hours and I don't know about the ventilation in that room. I don't know anything about that room. I do know I can come and go when I'm outside. So I resent that statement, you can do this, but you can't go into the boardroom. I chose to do that. I choose not to go into a closed room with 15 to 20 people wearing a mask and not wearing a mask.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. I have Mr. Guarino and then back to you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm willing to wait. I think we can wait. These are extraordinary times. We're in the middle of a pandemic. We've lost 200,000 people. And, you know, people say we'll lose a 98% recovery rate, but people who have recovered have problems and they don't know whether those problems are going to be long-term. I mean, I personally know people who have recovered and they have health problems because of it. But I think we're living in extraordinary times and we really have to take precautions until we get a vaccine, until we get really things back to normal. And talking about access to the public, you know, what's going to happen when we go back to the board and we're not on television? You know, people are going to say, oh, you're meeting in private now or something like that. I mean, there's always, there's always something. But I see no reason why we can, you know, can wait till January or whenever, you know, maybe towards the end of the year. So I'm willing to do that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. I have a list going at this point. It's Ms. Johnson, Ms. Oden, and then Mr. Norris.
Thank you very much. No disrespect, Ms. Timmons. I didn't mean it with any disrespect for you, but this would be a more controlled environment. And if we have questions about the ventilation system, let's check it. Let's make sure our ventilation system is working good for us and for the rest of the students. So, and controlled environment in a post office is not controlled, whether it's a store or any place, it's really not controlled. But here's the statistics now. From the CDC, 0 to 19, 99.97% survival rate, 20 to 49 survival rate, 99.98%. 70-plus, 94.6% and 50 to 69, 99.5%. So we're doing pretty good now with this virus. We understand the virus. And as far as a vaccine, I'm not going to take a vaccine, so I might as well just live in the cave for the rest of my life. But it's a point of that, I understand that we won't be on TV, but we have to, the Zoom is getting, we have long meetings with the Zoom because we're not face-to-face and we've got to raise our hands and we're trying to get to this one, to that one. You know, we talked about this a while ago. We, most of us were in agreement, we had enough people to get back into the high school. Now we're talking about it again. And I for one, I mean, I'm out all the time and I think it's time that we really get back into the, into the boardroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I have Ms. Oden, Mr. Norris, and then Ms. Gilio.
Thank you. I respect people's opinions. I know that different people have different thoughts on this. And I think you're entitled to it, allow it. Everybody's in a different place. Everybody has different circumstances. For me, I would like to go back to the boardroom. I think having the, the public be involved, should they want to be, I just think it's a much better setting. Quite frankly, I'm very tired of these Zoom meetings. So I would like to go back to the boardroom. And I'm just wondering if there's any way we might be able to share the boardroom with the aldermen, if we have to bring the equipment back there? You know, I know that the aldermen always had their meetings televised and us were televised. I don't understand, the ETV people, I'm sure, could explain it to me, but I just think if we could share a room somehow, that it might be possible because I would prefer to meet in public. And I respect those people that do not feel comfortable. They certainly can call in, we've had that before. But for me, I would like to go back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oden, Mr. Norris, and then Ms. Gilio.
Thank you. So do we have any more information on what we would have to do to get the meetings televised? I know we've said, oh, it's, it's like kind of out of the circumstances, we can do it right now, but is it possible that, like, they need more time to do it? Or is it just, no, we can't do it as long as the aldermen are there?
Ms. Cincella?
I think that ETV's concerns were going back and forth. It's one or the other. They can make the switch, but that gives them no ability should a week later, there be some sort of incident or even the fact that if you're running right at 5:00 and you have one board member out, then we don't have a quorum. So it's really making the quorum. It's not about the health, it's really not about ETV, it's about making the quorum. And while you currently have a couple of board members who may not be able to, that voted to be back in-person, that may not be able to do it for a little while, you're running the risk, if one of you doesn't attend the meeting, it's off, the meeting's off. And that, you know, throws a kind of a curve ball in the schedule and we're not able to say, well, we can't make it this week, let's do a Zoom. It's one or the other. So I think that that was the premise of, should we stay, sorry, doing Zooms until we're in a better place and we have maybe six, seven board members that can be present? I hope that helps.
So once we move, once we take the equipment from the studio and put it at North, and he said it takes two to three weeks to do that.
Right.
Then we can't go back. So we also have to have that gap in meetings for a couple of weeks in order to allow the switch to happen, right?
Correct.
So if we were to vote to go in-person, but then one or more of our members is unable to make it and we have to go back to Zoom, we have to cancel everything for two weeks?
Right. And I just, right, and I just want to make the board aware, and I know that some of you have lived through the times when we've had members on the phone. One member on the phone slows the process down. Four members on the phone will make this Zoom look speedy.
Yeah, that's true. Okay.
Could I also ask a follow-up too?
Yes.
Thank you. So have we put any protocols into place for, I know we voted last meeting to go back to in-person, but have we figured out anything on how to handle the public? Because I know if we end up not televising the board meetings, I know we're going to get a lot of, like a large increase of the public wanting to go to the meetings, but are we prepared to deal with 100 people, 50 people, however many people might show up?
That's a really good question, Mr. Norris. And the answer is, I don't think we have protocols yet. There's discussions about, you know, blocking off seats and making lines in the hallway to make sure people stay six feet apart. We are required by law and by our own policies to provide the public access to our meetings. So usually that is, like right now, they have access through the television or people can call in if they want to speak at our regular meetings. But RSA 91A does not require it to be, to be broadcast. So technically, we could have it and just have the public be able to access North, but then you have that question of, do we want the public accessing North as we move hybrid to have, you know, kids in there too? And I don't know what kind of cleaning protocols, I just don't know the answer. I don't know if that was helpful. Do you have any other questions or comments, Mr. Norris?
No, thank you.
Okay. I can't hear you. Oh, sorry, I had Ms. Gilio next, then Ms. Timmons and Ms. Brown, but I thought Dr. Mosley was waving his hand.
I just added my name to the queue. I'm after Jen Biercher, so I can just wait.
Oh my goodness, I see all these people on the chat that I missed. Okay. Thank you.
Is it my turn?
Yes, I'm going to consult the chat and follow that after you. And I know Ms. Timmons has been waving at me.
Okay. So, you know, I know I voted for us to return to in-person meetings. I think that they're really important. I am not unwilling to go to them, but I feel that if we're taking a new vote on this tonight, that I really should recuse myself because as much as I would be willing to be there, the reality of it is that I may not be able to get to a meeting until just before Christmas. I am certainly going to be, not be able to get to meetings the whole month of October without amazing transportation for me and my little wagon that I'm going to be riding on. Once I go into a walking boot sometime in November, I still cannot drive myself because it's my right foot. At that point, if there are people who kind of live on or near the route that I would take to get here and I can get transportation to the meetings, I will be willing to come in-person. Once we make some kind of safety precautions about how we limit the public to the room where we're meeting and how, how those safety considerations are decided. So I'm going to kind of just back out of saying one way or the other tonight, but I respect everyone's opinion on this and I do think it's important that we meet if we can. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gilio. I have now, Ms. Timmons, Ms. Brown, Ms. Bishop, and Dr. Mosley.
I like the first thing, Stephen, for his comment. Secondly, if we go back into, into the queue, into the room, there's a problem with social dissent from the public. Who's going to be out there to guide those people and to watch who comes into the building, who's not into the building? Who's going to do that? There's a lot of things you have to cover. Who's going to say, you can sit here and you can sit there while we're on the horseshoe? Who's going to be able to control that, 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 that whole concept of people coming into the boardroom? Who's going to do that? Who's going to be out there doing that? That's another reason why I don't want to go into a boardroom is because there's no control. There is absolutely no control whatsoever. And I also talk to a lot of parents as well and they also have the same concerns that I have and other members of the board have. They may be at their board meeting the first of October and that's not going to look pretty. I'm going to tell you that right off the bat. It's just going to be too many people. And I was wondering how is that, how is that going to be controlled? Who can control that? Are you going to control that? I don't know who's going to control the, lots of people coming into that horseshoe.
No, I'm not, I'm not controlling or guiding the public while also trying to manage possibly four members on the phone and people in public.
The same, we have to consider that as well. It's not just that we, I don't want to meet in public, one, it's not a good time to meet in public. We still in a pandemic and I believe in science. So I'm telling you, it's not a good idea right now. And I do respect everybody's opinion and I just don't like people digging at me, that's all.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Timmons. And then I have Ms. Brown, then Ms. Bishop, then Dr. Mosley.
Thank you. I think those are all valid points. A few months ago, I laid out a lot of really pretty solid ideas, I think, to help maintain social distancing and marking off the space. We actually also have security guards through the school system who it wouldn't, we could actually have them there during those time slots to help assist with any kind of that management if necessary. I think this, well, I'm ready to go back. I think the public's ready for us to go back. I, I'm willing to meet and I think this board as a whole has been willing, shown an amazing amount of willingness to push through to late nights, through meeting during the day, adding weekend meetings. Like, we've been meeting a lot this summer. And it's been, I have faith in us that we will continue to show that same amount of effort to get, have enough of us show up to the meetings, make sure we have a quorum in-person. I'm confident that that will happen. And finally, I think the fact that we already voted on this, the only way to overturn it is for the people, we intend, well, we intentionally voted on it, leaving it three weeks out so that we could accommodate the ETV people. And I think the only way we can overturn this is if the people who voted for it when it passed the first time is if they would like to change their vote right now. So I think that's the only way this particular motion can be overturned.
Point, point of information, I wasn't there that, that night, so I didn't get to vote on it. So I think, I think I should have a say in whether we go back or not.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. There's a couple of ways to do it. The board can always vote, again, on something as we have more information. We're not stuck in one place as new information comes in. Anyone who voted yes can make a motion to reconsider the vote. And if that passes, then we take a whole new vote. Anyone, whether they voted for it or against it, can make a new motion, motioning not to meet until certain criteria are met or some other wording that would be contrary to the first motion. So I think a motion to reconsider is cleaner, but that's my understanding of Robert's rules on this, on this question. Anything else, Ms. Brown?
Nope. Hope we keep our plan to go back into the boardroom.
Thank you. Ms. Bishop?
I think actually ETV answered in the chat. My question was about, it's September 28th, we had voted to start in-person meetings in October. I'm noticing in the calendar that we don't have a meeting again until the 13th, which does leave us the three weeks, but I was clarifying, if we were planning on having any meetings the first week of October, where's all the equipment now? If it's already there, let's just follow it. But it, it doesn't sound like it is there. So even if we had a meeting next week, we wouldn't have been able to kind of accommodate our motion anyway. So I just wanted that clarifying piece about where the equipment is, but it sounds like, let me, I'll just review the chat, but it sounds like it's ready to go. Is that correct?
So it's in the studio now so that they can broadcast this meeting. Anytime we call a meeting until we're meeting in public, it's in the studio. And then they need two weeks because there's a lot of heavy equipment to move it and get it, well, to disconnect it, to move it and then reconnect it properly at North. So that's where the lead time comes in. So if they started tomorrow, they would be ready for October 13th. But if we don't have a quorum, we have to cancel. If, if we only have five people who are willing to meet or able, let me, I'm going to change it, not willing, able to meet in-person, because I think the majority of us want to be in the boardroom and want to be hearing from parents and community members directly. It's much better for a lot of reasons. If one more person becomes unable to meet in-person, we have to cancel all of our meetings for two weeks so that they can move the equipment back and then we have to Zoom for a while and then, and then do it all over again. So it's, it's not as easy as just moving back and forth from, from meeting to meeting or week to week. It's a kind of an all-or, either we continue Zoom or we make the change and we continue in-person. It's really difficult to go back and forth. Think I explained that right?
Well, what happens, so if we have one person, one of the five people in-person that can't show up and we have to cancel the meeting because we don't have the quorum, why does that mean we need to take down the equipment and start over? Wouldn't we just anticipate having five members present for the next meeting?
Yes, I'm sorry, some long-term, like if one of our members became ill and couldn't attend meetings for a month or something. But if one of the five is just sick that day or has some other, you know, reason why they can't attend one meeting, we would have to cancel the meeting and reschedule it. Which October, we have four meetings in one week, one of those weeks, and another with two and another with one, but I think we're going to add more because we always add more. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Mosley? Oh, I have chat too, but Dr. Mosley, go ahead.
This is two points I just want to make. I don't know if there's a particular topic that the board's going to discuss on any in-person meeting. I just want to make you aware, I'm not sure that I can get all of the faculty or the right people present in the meeting as well. So there, there might be a time where if there's only four lines or three lines open, a director or someone who's important may need to occupy one of those lines to participate in the meeting. This is new territory. We've never been faced with this where I've asked someone during a pandemic if they can attend in-person. And we do have, depending on the topic and depending on the circumstances, we do have people who are, who are out, directors and, you know, high-level personnel who have made specific requests not to be in, in-person. Myself, I don't anticipate this. I don't speak for Garth and Anthony, I'm sure they're, they're okay, but, you know, depending on their circumstances, that might change as well. Ms. Raymond hit on it a little earlier. We're going to have a lot of meetings this, this year, in-person and on Zoom. We do have contract negotiations that are starting for, on, on many of the bargaining units. So it is likely that it's going to be a three, sometimes two to three nights a week, there'll be some form of an in-person or Zoom meeting in the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. And just to reiterate, we can't do Zoom one night and in-person the next night. There has to be a two-week gap between Zoom and in-person. And eventually, ETV is going to hate us because we make them unplug and carry and replug all that equipment, like it's, it's only so often. But Ms. Brown is correct that there is no legal requirement that I can find for having in-person meetings. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Timmons, I just saw in the chat that you had a question.
Yes, I have a question about what you said about all the meetings that's coming up in October. I know we meet a lot. Some of us do a lot more than just meet for the Board of Education. So to schedule all your days and all your evenings for Board Ed, that's something I cannot do. So it's going to be times where I'm not going to be able to do it because I do have other things other than the Board of Education, have a life outside the Board of Education. My life is not the Board of Education. My life is the community in, in the city at large. So if you're going to have 20 meetings a week, I mean, a month, that's way too many. And my question to you is, how many meetings are we going to have in October? Do you anticipate?
So in your packet, in the back of the packet, is a calendar view. I asked Ms. Cincella to include it because I have difficulty with lists and I like the grid. I don't know. So because we made a two-week gap at the beginning, we moved every Um, so because we made a two-week gap at the beginning, we moved everything down to the last three weeks. And I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven meetings. Um, one of them is a training with the School Board Association, which I hope everyone can attend because I think it will be helpful. Um, but I know that we have a couple other, um, as Dr. Mosley said, we're going to have some non-public things coming up in the next month or so that the board will need to discuss. Um, in November, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight meetings. It's a lot.
It's a lot. It's okay if it's only an hour meeting, but when these meetings go on three and four, five hours, it's ridiculous. And people just like to talk for the sake of talking. I want to do what we need to do and get it done. We don't keep hearing the same old nonsense over and over again.
So, so I have a couple of concern, I'm sorry, did anyone else wish to speak? I don't want to cut anybody off. Did we lose Mr. Gao? I don't see him.
Yes, he had to leave the, for the, the evening.
Oh, I didn't even say hello and now he's gone. Oh, well, I hope things are going well for him. So I have a couple of concerns, um, either way. One is, I don't, I don't like the appearance or how it feels about the idea of sending our kids back into the classroom when we're not meeting and having central office staff back in the office when we're not meeting in person. Um, it makes me feel icky and I guess that's hypocrisy eating at me. Um, two, five, it's very risky. I worry that with five people, and that's my count right now, of people willing to, willing, I keep saying willing and I don't, I don't think that's an accurate word, uh, able to meet in person right now. Um, I, I think with five, we run the risk of somebody's car breaking down or something else happening and having to reschedule some of these, you know, almost a dozen meetings that we're having a month, which just means another night out and all those people who drove out there for nothing. Um, so that is concerning. Um, finally, I'm really concerned about public access. I um, miss hearing, I never thought I would say this, but I, I actually miss hearing from the NTU and Adam uh, on the NTU's position on some of the things before us. Um, there's not a meeting that goes by when we've been in public where somebody hasn't pointed out something in public comments that has made me, you know, think or reflect. Um, and so I like that part of meeting and I, I'm hesitant to um, lose it. So I think if we decide to stay remote, then we ought to uh, come up with a better way of alerting the public to how they can dial in um, and making sure that public comments are, are honored. Um, and I guess the last thing is regarding students. Um, last week, last week, gosh, everything blends together on the note. Um, you know, we voted a couple of weeks ago to modify the hybrid schedule, to slow it down a little and add the students who most need to be in the classroom first. Um, and Dr. Mosley sent out a, um, a letter that makes it seem like we're not going to get to the middle and high school grades. Um, which means that we may not have students in the building until, on a large scale, until later. So anyways, that was all of my thoughts. Now everyone has them. Um, so on that note, um, I'm willing to entertain a motion to reconsider from anyone who voted yes to meeting in public at our last meeting. People can remember their vote. Um, if not, I'll make the motion to reconsider.
Now, is there a motion you're making or what?
I was asking for a motion to reconsider the vote to meet in non-public. But everyone was silent, so I'll make the motion. Because I voted yes.
If you need a second, I'll second.
Think you had to have been there.
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Gilio seconds.
Okay.
So that's a motion to reconsider the prior vote. A yes vote on a motion to reconsider means that yes, you're willing to take up the question again. A no means no, it was voted on and decided and that's that. Okay? Uh, does anyone have anything else they wanted to add? Seeing none, Mr. Guarino?
Hey, on the motion to reconsider, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Uh, Paula Johnson?
No.
Uh, Jennifer Bishop?
No.
Uh, Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
No.
Heather Raymond?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Dottie Oden?
No.
Gloria Timmons?
Yes.
They got one, two, three, four yeses, five nos. The motion to reconsider uh, fails.
Okay, so we will be meeting in public on October the 13th.
I'd like, I'd like, uh.
Go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
I'd like to make a motion that we postpone meeting in public.
Okay.
I second that.
Do you have a day in mind?
Well, I, I think you make a very good point that, um, make a couple of very good points. Um, that um, um, it does, we, we should go back if, if our classes go back. And that's a very good point. And that's what I was, um, wanted to do. In fact, I've stated that before. But as we have put off most of our classes and we're really not going to be meeting, like you said, in bulk in January, I don't really think our schools are really going to be up and running um, until, you know, January, I mean, in, in really full force. We're only going to have, I think, 25% sometime in November um, of some of the classes. So um, anyways, I would like to, uh, my, my motion is to postpone uh, meeting in public until uh, at a, at a date later on that we think it's more appropriate.
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I'm not going to support this because that's a, that's an indefinite period of time. So this date that could be appropriate could be June 30th, when school's out. Right now, nobody's really going to be in the building. So it's going to be a safer environment all around because it's other than the custodians, which I would imagine they're still in there working. Um, and I'm not going to support this. It's time for us to get back out into the building and we need to show the commu- community that we're out there working and that we want our students to get back in there. You know, the biggest problem what we have is students now that are going, uh, they're depressed, they're not socializing, they're not out there. And we just need to get back in that building and, and work as a team again in person. Thank you.
I call the question.
Okay, there's a motion to call the question. So uh, this motion requires us to um, decide if we are going to continue conversation or if we are going to immediately vote. Um, a yes vote on call to question means that we're ending discussion and we're going to immediately vote on the topic. A no vote means that we can allow the other people who wish to speak to do so um, before we vote on the motion at hand. So, Mr. Guarino, on call to question?
Okay, um. Mr. Guarino votes no. Paula Johnson?
No.
Um, Jennifer Bishop?
No.
Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Uh, Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Um, Heather Raymond?
Um. No.
Dottie Oden?
I'm sorry, I had technical problems here. Yes.
Gloria Timmons?
No.
One, two, three, four, five nos, three yeses, and those have it.
Yeah, I had Ms. Bishop fixed on my list.
So I also agree that we need to be getting back into um, as public as we're asking the students to. I agree with Ms. Johnson about um, you know, being safe. I haven't stopped working. I've been in the hospital this whole time and we haven't had any outbreaks. I haven't experienced anything. I'm not working with anybody who's experienced anything. However, I think because we are um, wanting the students to stay safe, I'm wondering if a friendly amendment, well, no, we already voted on it, but I'm wondering if we want to make the motion to just push it out to match up with the students going back into school. So if we want to say, let's push it off until November 1st and then we can have a better sense of how the community is reacting to these larger, um, these larger instances of public gatherings.
I will accept a friendly amendment.
Well, I think we already voted on it.
None on the amendment.
You're on, you're on mute, Heather.
I'm on mute. We did not vote on the motion. We only voted on the question, calling the question. So if, if Mr. Guarino is willing to alter his motion um, and uh, Ms. Timmons is willing to accept that, then we can do so. And Ms. Timmons was waving her hand at me, so.
I agree with um, Ms. Bishop. Um, one other thing, we should, and I, I know I do it all the time. We should allow NTU and the public to go onto Zoom. Um, we, I, I did it last night, matter of fact. Um, the public can speak. And so they don't necessarily have to come into a boardroom to speak. We can have a webinar where they can speak. And NTU, I really believe, should have a say at the table in the public, um, in the public arena as well. So we can amend the um, motion to include public comments and um, also um, extend it as, um, till January, whatever date we have in, um, January, November. November, I'm sorry, where all the students are going back to school, then we should do that. We should match up.
So just to make sure that I have it right in my mind, the motion is now a motion to postpone meeting in public until November 1st and to um, allow public comments at all the meetings?
Yes, all the public, all the public meetings should have public comments.
Including the committee meetings or no?
No, no, it's up to the committee. No. Um, Tara's shaking her head, no, okay.
Okay.
Public comment at committee meetings before, I know, but this is different circumstances. So that's certainly up to you, but previously, we have not allowed.
Public, our base, our board meetings should have public comments, just like Johnson said. And they also should have NTU, um, they should have a chance to say whatever they need to say. I think it's important that they comment.
Okay. Okay, so if I understand it, the motion, Mr. Guarino, make sure that I've got this right, is to postpone meeting in public until November 1st and to allow public comments and invite the NTU?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Now, hold on, I had lots of hands. Uh, back to Ms. Bishop because she had the floor. And then to, uh, Ms. Timmons, did you finish your comment?
Well, that's it.
Okay, so Ms. Bishop, then to Ms. Johnson, then to Ms. Brown. So I'm missing. Okay.
So I'm looking at the calendar. Um, and I feel like this plan probably works out realistically because the only meeting that we have is November 2nd and that's our, we have your School Board Association one. Um, it, I don't know if we can do that as a training, just us.
That's a non.
If it's televised?
Nope, that one's not televised.
So we could realistically, I don't know, fiddle with that a little bit, but that does give us um, almost a three-week leeway. Nope, that's November. It gives us the same two-week leeway that we had going into October. So the schedule's already built to accommodate this.
And it sounds like we would have a six because Ms. Gilio um, could be carpooled.
I'll pick you up.
And thank you.
Ms. uh, Ms. Johnson and then Ms. Brown.
I'm not going to support this because I keep feeling that when we get closer to that date, we're going to push it out some more. And I don't understand why we didn't have the public involved in any of these meetings. The public should have been able to, to zoom into these meetings and speak to us. And we didn't do it under the, under the executive orders, which we should have. And I think it's time, and I'm going to keep saying it again, whether people like it or not, but it's time for us to get back into the boardroom. And I voted to allow not to move the question because I felt it was fair just for everybody to have their opinion here. But I just think come November, we're going to move it out again and by the time it's going to be January. And it's, it's time for us to get back in there. These Zoom meetings is, these little boxes, I can't deal with them anymore.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Just, just for reference, the second page of the agenda online, um, unless it's a special Board of Ed meeting, but I'm happy to, depending on the topic, open up special Board of Ed meeting agendas. Dr. Mosley and I can discuss it. The second page of the agenda has um, how you can join to the Zoom meeting if you're in the public. Um, and we've had public comments. We had one where it worked really well and then the last meeting, I think, went so late that we just lost people.
But we did, we did have some that worked well, but on that, on that one meeting, people were in the queue and we lost some of them. And it's hard for people to, to call in. The phones don't work all the time great. We're losing people at times. And I just, again, I'm just going to say it again, it's time to get back into the boardroom where the public has supposedly access to us. And we're a public body and the public body should meet publicly where people have access. That's what a public body is all about and that's what we got elected to do.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Um, I have, uh, Ms. Brown.
Hey, thank you. Um, yeah, I guess I just got to second exactly what Ms. Johnson said. Um, it's time for us to get back in there. I'm willing to do it. I'm not going to support this because I do feel like we're just kind of kicking this can down the road. It's as soon as we get a little closer, we get a little carrot out there and then we push it out. And um, I think it sends a bad message. I support getting back. I support public comment. Um, but postpone, continual postponements and at the very, like, as soon as we get to a crucial pivot point where we need to start making action is not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Anyone else? All right, I just want to say that um, I agree completely uh, with what Ms. Johnson is saying. Um, I think we ought to be, we're a public body, we ought to meet publicly. Um, but as president, I have a responsibility to um, manage um, the, the nuts and bolts of how the meeting runs. And if I don't have a quorum, I can't do that. Um, and so unless we have at least six, but I would like people who are able to physically make it, I can't support meeting in public. Um, I supported it last time uh, because we had six, but life has happened, um, just like it happens with everybody. Um, and we have to be realistic. This is what um, happens sometimes when you have um, a board of people in the pandemic. So that's, that's kind of where I am. Ms. Johnson?
If I remember correctly, I think Mrs. Ziem also voted to go back into the boardroom. So I mean, another board member said that they weren't here, wasn't fair, they couldn't vote on it. But I guess it's not fair for Mrs. Ziem now because she voted to go back into the boardroom and she's not here right now. So she wanted to go back so you would have had your sixth person.
But I, I, I would contend that this proves my point. That if we, we can't, if we're so close to numbers that if one person can't do it, then we can't, can't do it, so.
But the thing is here, we didn't talk about putting this up for another vote tonight.
It was on the agenda.
Yeah, but Mrs. Ziem also told us that she wasn't going to be here last week because of personal reasons. So I guess that's not fair to her because she was, she was one of the votes to go back in to the chamber. So it's not fair to her that we're doing, well, I guess, yeah. But it's not fair to the rest of us that we already said that this is what we want to do and now we put it up for a vote because somebody wasn't here the last time. So I guess it's a double-edged sword here with the games here. Don't, don't even go after me tonight.
That's not why we're putting it up for a vote, not because someone wasn't here. That's just wrong. I, I, no, um, I respect everybody's ability to make a, uh, everybody's opinion. I respect your opinion, but that is, that is not. that is, that is not correct. We're not putting it up for a vote just because I wasn't here. That's just not true. Okay, it was on the agenda as the, as the president said. And, um, and I, I never said it wasn't fair to, to me. I just said that I didn't get a chance. That's all. That's all I said. I didn't say you were fair or you weren't fair. I just said I wasn't here at the time. That's all I said. And I didn't say it was fair or unfair to me. But, um, as I said, I respect everybody's opinion. Everybody has a difference of opinion. Just because I have an opposite opinion or I'm contrary, doesn't mean I'm trying to say that I'm trying to block anyone's opinion or, 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 uh, it's personal. Okay, I'm just, you know, this is, um, I, I, I think that we should go back and we will go back, but what's practical and what we want to do are two different things. And I think that Ms. Raymond made that point. What, what we want to do is one thing, what's practical is, i- i- is different. So we have to look at that. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Uh, Ms. Gilio?
I, I, I understand what Paula is saying and I don't totally disagree with her. But my concern is that I think that the motion which has us coming back in November will work better because we have to remember that Ms. Ziem is having very serious surgery in a couple of days. And it is unlikely, I would imagine, that she can make it in person to many of the early October meetings. I'm assuming she's going to have a long recuperation. Whereas if we start, um, the public meetings again in November, I can get there even if I have to take a taxi or walk. Well, no, not going to walk, but, um, and, and, and so I think we have a better chance of having maybe seven people there if we get to November. Um, so I just, I will support this motion.
Thank you. And again, I put it on the agenda because of changed circumstances. Um, as things change and evolve and we have new information, I bring that to the board and the board decides. Um, so we each have one vote. Do with it what your conscience tells you. Uh, Ms. Johnson and then I, I'm going to ask.
Okay, so I guess I want to amend this. That if we're going to have to go to November 1st, that I want to amend it basically to say that this will be the correct date that we are going back into, uh, public meetings at the high school. I want to word it that we're not going to change the date again. This is it. Because I, I, again, I understand what Ms. Jill, Jill Gilio, I, I know I didn't say it right tonight. I'm sorry. Is saying, and I get it. And I understand Ms. Ziem's condition. But I, I mean, we can't keep changing the dates because the public needs to know that this is like the date that we're going back in and we're not going to change it again. Not unless the sky falls. You know, so we need to be consistent and say, this is the date. This is the date that we're planning to reopen our meetings and this is what we're going to stick to. So I don't know how to word it tonight. So, but that's basically what I, what I think has to be done. Has, we have to have a specific date at this point in time.
Mr. Guarino?
Well, I, I, I think that's kind of redundant. I mean, we do have a date. We have a definite date of November 1st. Um, and that's what, you know, the, the motion says that that's when we're going to re- return. Um, uh, so I don't, I think what you're saying is kind of redundant. That is the date. So, um, so I, I don't, I don't understand the, uh, the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Uh, thank you, Ms. Johnson. I think, um, at this point, I understand Ms. Johnson's frustration about pushing the date out again. Um, I, I agree completely. Um, however, I think that it's just as frustrating to have canceled meetings. We, I, we've gone through this with this board in the past where people have been unable to meet and had to cancel for lack of a quorum and nobody likes to cancel the day of or the day before because we don't have a quorum. Um, it's frustrating for us and it's frustrating for the public, especially for people who were planning on, like they have their statement written out and they're ready to go and then we cancel last minute. That can be extraordinarily frustrating. Um, but again, I think it's, it's extremely important that we have the public not just watching our meetings, but being able to access them, um, and have their time to comment. So, Ms. Bishop?
Uh, this is just a, probably a clerical question. Um, but if we're, i- if people are quarantining or being asked not to, um, not to come into work or something, are they also asked not to come to public meetings as well?
Yes, they should be.
So like if, the, if the, if a school or an activity closes, we would expect those teachers and those coaches not to be showing up to public meetings or is it still within their right to show up? As long as it's not a job. But if it's a job obligation, they have to show up. But if they're being told not to show up because things are closed, they can't show up, right?
Right. Well, I mean, I think if people are being asked to quarantine, um, then they need to quarantine. This happened in, oh, shoot, I forget what state it was recently. Oh, it was Massachusetts. Where, um, a student was sent to school by his parents, even though they were asked to quarantine because the parents thought, well, it's not his job. It's not, you know what I mean? The, the doctor who asked them to quarantine wasn't very specific about all the places. Um, so we need to be very specific. If you're asked to quarantine, don't go anywhere. If you need help, there are lots of organizations out there who have volunteers who will help, like bring you groceries or other things. Don't come to our meetings if you're quarantining.
Well, I'm thinking if we have to close, um, certain job aspects, would they not be able to come?
Yes, same thing. If we, for example, had a positive test and some of our teachers had to be quarantining or, um, our, heaven forbid, our administrators had to be quarantining, um, then we would not be able to have them at our public meeting.
Or even just being requested not to come into the building. That would include our public meetings. So we run the risk of losing, you know, principals when they need to come in, administration when they need to come in. So we could not only be down, you know, the, the extra person that we need to make a quorum, but we could also be down all of that information because we can't have them call in because we won't be set up for that in the public, in the horseshoe.
Right, there's only four phone lines in that room. That's, that's it. That's how many we have. We've tried putting people on cell phones and putting the microphone and it does not.
I think I'm just pointing out that us getting back into meetings, which I 100% support because if we're asking students and teachers to do it, we should do it as well. But these meetings are also bigger than us members. It's everybody else that needs to show up that we rely on for information. So it's, I mean, they're, they, it's just like, we're living in an exten- extenuating circumstance right now, but, um, so I'm going to support my motion, although I think it was my amendment to the motion, but, um, I think we have to remember that it's, that it's more than just us that we're making these decisions for. But I want us to get back into meetings. The walls are closing in. But anyway, I, can we, do you want to call the role? Is there some sort of formal? Who's he, what's it I can say?
You could call the quest, you could call the question, but then we'd have to vote on that before we voted on the motion.
Um, no.
If, if I had my way, I would just let Mr. Guarino speak and then have him call a rule.
Okay, I agree.
Okay. Uh, I'll, I'll do that. Um, I was going to say more, but, um, I, I just, really quick, I went to the dentist today and they took my temperature. You know, I had to wear a mask. And I had to fill out a long list of, um, you know, have you been sick? Have you, in the past 14 days, blah, blah, blah. It was a long list of things. And I think that, um, Gloria made, Ms. Ms. Timmons made a very good point, you know, who's going to, you know, we're open to the public. And, um, who's going to, who's going to be controlling, you know, what happens when people, when people come? You know, we don't have that in our, um, in our boardroom. So anyways, I think I'm beating a dead horse here. If you want me to take the role, I'll take the role. You're ready. Madam President.
Can we repeat the question, please?
Sure. It's, uh, the motion is to postpone the meetings in public, uh, until November 1st and um, also Ms. Timmons made an, another amendment. I think it was the second amendment on that.
Ms. Brown amended the.
Yeah, I have, I have written down just friendly edits and it was a motion to postpone the meeting, to postpone meeting in public, uh, until 11/1 and allow public comments and invite the NTU.
Right, right. That's what it was. Okay. Which I already thought would happen, but I guess, yeah, you, yeah, because it's on our agenda. But anyways, okay. On the motion, um, Raymond Guarino votes yes. Paula Johnson?
No.
Uh, Jennifer Bishop?
Yes.
Um, Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
No.
Heather Raymond?
Yes.
Dottie Oden?
No.
Laura Timmons?
Yes.
I have five yeses and one, two, three nos. Motion carries five to three.
Okay. Um, that's what I had on, um, my agenda. I just wanted to bring up, um, something that came up at the JS SBC on Thursday night. Um, I know we didn't have, we had just a quorum at that meeting, um, because it was postponed. Um, so one of the questions that came up was the, um, construction managers um, received the email or received a communication that, um, the middle schoolers would not be returning to the buildings until January 1st. Um, and based on that, the idea that there would be no middle schoolers in the building, um, they are able to accelerate their, um, plans for the renovation, well, their actual activities for the renovation at Fairgrounds. Um, uh, at the JS SBC, um, we learned that special education students who will be returning to the buildings this, this month in October are not actually going to Fairgrounds. Um, they're going to go to South um, because of some of the demolition that's happening there. We don't want them to, to be around any of that, even though it's cordoned off, you know, want the kids there. But the question becomes, um, do we go ahead and, and approve, um, the construction managers continuing with accelerating the Fairgrounds project, in which case students will not be able to return? Or do we ask them just to hold off and do their regular schedule, uh, which would have some of this demolition happening over the school breaks in, at the end of December and then in February? Um, doing it now saves us time and money. Um, but doing it later, um, is also fine. That's the original timeline. Um, but, um, would allow students to be in the schools. And I, I thought I would bring it to the board and not speak for everyone. Okay, uh, Ms. Brown?
I moved to table this until our full Board of Education meeting, um, which will have public comment on October 13th.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion is to table the discussion uh, regarding construction till 10/13. I will tell you that I'm bringing it up tonight because if we don't tell them between now and the 13th, they won't be able to do some of the things that they were planning on doing. They were, I thought they were pretty clear that they needed an answer before the 13th, like by the end of this week. So, um, I didn't catch hands, so if people could remind me, uh, I.
I, i- is there, I don't think there's discussion with table motion?
I don't recall. I'll, I'll go by your, your judgment.
I think Mr. Guarino was correct.
Mm-hmm.
So, so let's take the role on tabling.
Okay, on tabling, uh, this till October 13th regarding accelerating construction. Uh, Mr. Guarino votes no. Uh, Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Uh, Jen Bishop? I'm sorry, I didn't.
I didn't answer yet. No.
Okay. Uh, Sharon, uh, Gilio?
No.
Uh, Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Um, Heather Raymond?
No.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
Laura Timmons?
No.
I have five nos. Uh, and three yeses, so motion, motion, uh, fails.
Okay, so, um, we're back to, oh, I'm on mute. So we're back to, um, the question of what to tell the construction managers. Um, and I saw a bunch of hands. I saw Dr. Mosley. I saw Ms. Bishop. I think I saw Ms. Gilio. Uh, Ms. Johnson. Okay, so let's start with Dr. Mosley.
I just wanted to clarify. I think there was a, the construction took, is my understanding that some of the special education rooms at Fairgrounds have been affected by the construction? And there was a slight, I would say, delay in those rooms. The rooms are also, I want to be very clear, the last time I met with the admin meeting, we were still deciding on where to place those, uh, those rooms and they're very sensitive, special education rooms. And we were looking at the high school because they have to be temperature controlled. So all of those rooms, no matter what, if it's 100 degrees or even 30 degrees, they have to be 70 degrees at, at, at minimum. So, um, you know, the, 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 moving the rooms, I think we settled either on the south or the north. I wasn't sure to, to Ms. Raymond's point. Um, but with that said, you know, it, it could be an opportunity to accelerate, uh, the construction, given the fact that, you know, we don't have kids in some of our buildings. We might be able to temporary house a very sensitive program to accommodate the, uh, construction. So it's a win-win in some respects. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Mosley. That clears things up quite a bit. Um, Ms. Bishop?
Um, so this was to finish up which middle, would, to get which middle school done? Was it Penacheck or Fairgrounds?
Fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds. And it's not, I mean, this would be, they're asking for the construction to be done through November and December, right?
Yes. They, they would like to begin, they'd like to begin presently, um, within the next week or so.
So they're hoping no students are in Fairgrounds through November and December?
That was their understanding of what the plan was. And so they adjusted their construction plans accordingly. Um, and then on Thursday, I was like, wait a second. I don't think that's what we as a board voted, so.
Are we able to put the students that would be transitioning into Fairgrounds into other schools or would we be, would we be, um, what am I trying to say? Is there a way that we can move those students out and into other schools? Because I don't think the, the plan was to not have, the plan was not to have the schools empty until January.
Uh, Dr. Mosley?
To, to Ms. Bishop's question, I think the only, my understanding, and please, uh, Ms. Raymond, correct me. Um, I think it's really the special education rooms, um, and particularly the, 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 the program itself. Um, I've been over, I was over Fairgrounds yesterday. It's pretty messy over there. So there's taking advantage of the kids not being there. So, um, to be honest with you, I'm not, I think this was just exclusively talking about taking advantage of the specialized area to do additional construction, um, you know, progress, so to speak. And by doing that, it allows us to accelerate that particular area. I believe, well, I, I, I don't want to comment. I'll defer to Ms., uh, Ms. Raymond on that. I don't think, please correct me, Ms. Raymond, that it was, I still think the regular education kids can still come in there.
So not if, so the work that they're asking to do would, um, impact more than just the special education kids. They had some, um, diagrams and
Okay.
little prints that showed exactly where and, and the plans to like wall it off and how it could be done. But they would very much prefer.
Ms. Raymond, I think I can clarify a little bit.
So, yes.
I think I can clarify.
Okay, and Ms. Gilio is like waving.
Yeah, I think they were going to do a pretty large scale abatement that needs to be done in the building, um, now or. now or later. Either way, but it was, they made, they gave the impression that there was going to be some pretty heavy duty equipment and noises, making the process very difficult for really anybody in the building.
Ms. Gilio?
Hi, so, I'm, I'm one of the people that didn't make it to the late meeting the other night, but I did record it and watch the whole meeting. And I think maybe Dr. Mosley can clarify this and it will make it easier for everyone. When we, when we made the change to allow the special ed students to be going into the classrooms first, back to the schools first, there was a provision then that looked at kindergarten, maybe going back to school and then first grade. And if we looked at how many weeks, how far we would go in November through December, the question is really, are we going to be having sixth graders back in the, in the middle school, specifically Fairgrounds, before, after Christmas vacation? Because if we're, if we're, if we're, maybe the first week in November, we're letting first graders start and then, I don't know, is that a plan to let sixth graders go back at the same time? Or they need to know exactly when the middle school kids will, the, the middle school regular ed kids will be going back to Fairgrounds? Will it be November? Will it be December? If it's not until January first, then they do have an opportunity to get a lot done. But they have to know specifically when our kids are going to be back or be ready to go back to that school in particular. I think that clarifies it a little. I hope.
Yes.
The answer to that, Dr. Mosley, or have we got, our plan is that far ahead or?
Dr. Mosley is pointing, but he's on mute.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at a schedule here. I'm looking at a calendar here, so I'm just off to the side. So, we have that meeting on the ninth, correct? I'm just, I don't have all of my materials up and I'm having trouble accessing my email. So, just bear with me here, so just, I'm going at the top of my head.
It appears that the email is down for the district right now.
I just got a text from Greg and they're working on it. It's, it's a Microsoft thing, so they're working on it. It, it should be available eleven PM, that's what he said. But Greg is watching this meeting and he's trying to work on it.
Oh, he's so great, that's so nice of him. Okay. It was the sixteenth that we voted.
So, on the, isn't there a board meeting on the ninth, correct? Tara, ninth, right? And then we can make.
Ninth of what? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, November, correct?
I guess, I'm confused, so we're looking.
Correct.
So, at that meeting, there's a, you know, that meeting, we can talk about the, the second graders, the, a start date for the second grade. Just keep in mind that we, you know, by everything going well, it'd be third grade. So, we could, if everything's going really well, everything can, okay, I'm ballparking here, please don't quote me because I don't have it in front of me. The ninth we've, we've designated for the board and for administration, say, how's it going? What's it going? Do we want to move into, to, to the next grade, which would be grade two? And then, am I losing people?
No, I guess I just thought that this was something that we were going to continue to discuss at each meeting going forward. So, in October, we'd say, all right, we've started with the first two grades. What's the epidemiology? Are we going to continue to follow the schedule? Or can we do a bigger clump? Like, I thought it was going to be a constant discussion and not just every two weeks we add someone, but.
I'll say two weeks. I, I mean, if, if we can get the kids back, I, I don't want to say like a vague because it, it comes off as that. I, at the, two board meetings ago, I said every two weeks we'd start to roll in a different grade. I also would say that, to the point of Ms. Gilio, we, is, the question is, our sixth grade is going to be able to go back on the sixth? I mean, be before, a sixth grade is going to be able to go back before Thanksgiving. And I would say, looking at everything, there, that, that's a possibility. It is a possibility, it just is. However, I can't predict the staff and epidemiology as well. So, it would be, if you were, it would be really close to Christmas if we were to get those sixth graders back. It'd be close to Christmas break. It'd be a week or so before Christmas break if everything worked out the way it did.
If that's true, then wouldn't that allow the construction people at Fairgrounds to have October and November to work in the building? And then they would have to clear out in time for December's return of the sixth graders?
Yes. Again, yeah.
In an ideal world.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll say, I really struggle with, I really struggle with saying now, the last week in September, that we're not going to have the upper middle grades or even sixth grade or the high schools back until the end of, well, until January. I'm personally, I'm really struggling with that because I feel like we gave parents an option of remote or hybrid and now for sixth grade and up, we're like, ah, too bad, it's remote. And I understand we have staffing issues and we have epidemiology and there's a larger conversation here. But just, like the meetings, it makes me very uncomfortable. Does anyone else have anything to say? Ms. Brown? Ms. Bishop after?
Yeah. I sort of want to echo you a little bit, but go a little bit different direction. I, I'm reluctant to do this, not because I don't love saving money, but I do think that it's been disingenuous to the families that have chosen, who are interested in going back to school, to not, to essentially, if we, if we accept this proposal, move up the timeline before we've had a chance to have public comment and have our plan in place on paper, written down exquisitely on a detailed level where it's what our pivot points are going to be, then we're kind of locked into not having kids in at all until January at the middle, at the middle school level. So, I'm not a fan of that. And I want to, so I guess that's, that's, that's my biggest issue there. And also, I want to remind us that we do in fact have a phased plan that we talked about, being able to vote and move those into action whenever we had planned on it back on, in August. We said, we're going to do this phase, this phase, this phase. And I think that's gone by the wayside. So, I think that that's really, that's really important to remember, that we still have that document out there. And before we make a commitment to how we're going to do this, I really would like to have some real concrete ideas written down, documented in front of us to make this happen sooner than later. Because I don't think this path is the right one right now. Thank you.
Okay, I see a lot of people who wanted to speak. I think I skipped Ms. Johnson and then Ms. Bishop, Ms. Oden and Mr. Guarino.
Thank you. Ms. Brown made a lot of good points and, you know, with us keep changing the dates of school, the hybrid starting, parents, I understand why parents are getting upset with us. They try to make plans, they try to see what's going to be best for the kids. We gave a survey to the parents, parents were upset because we didn't have full day starting up. We only did hybrid and remote. So, now we talk about January. Oh, January comes, it's flu season now. Now, we're shutting down the schools because of the flu season. So, now the kids can't get back into school again. So, I agree with Ms. Brown, I'd like to see a detailed plan to the board before it goes out by email to the parents that we don't know what's, we don't have that transparency because I'm tired of getting, sometimes I feel like I'm getting blindsided here. That, and the, sometimes the emails and the letters don't make a hundred percent sense. So, I'd like to read and see what a plan is prior to being sent out to the parents in the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I have Ms. Bishop and then Ms. Oden and then Mr. Guarino.
So, one of the things that I thought we would be discussing at further meetings, like Ms. Brown said, I am also a huge fan of saving money. But, you know, we have, we have students that are really suffering not being in school. And I don't mean academically suffering, I, I think, you know, we're seeing a lot of mental health challenges popping up with kids being at home. And I know that we have statistics that we're looking at in regards to the safety or how unsafe COVID is, but I would, I, I think it's time that we start looking at the statistics on, you know, teenage suicide and substance misuse and what happens to young adults when they're exposed to, you know, at-home traumas, which are certainly the opportunities for them to affect children are, we don't, we don't even have a pulse on what's going on in people's homes right now. So, I think there's, there's an element of, yes, COVID is here. It is unsafe for many people and has very dramatic end results for a lot of people. But the things that children are being exposed to, I mean, the suicide rates and risks, I, I would gather, may be higher than the risks of COVID at this point. I don't have the numbers in front of me, those are all anecdotal. Just kind of what I'm seeing, the emails that we're getting. But at the same time, so that, that's my concern, I have three things. So, that's, that's one of my concerns. We need to get these kids back in school. There's a lot of, my cat keeps biting me because she wants me to go feed her. So, if you can see me squirming, she keeps biting my toes. So, I think we need to get the kids back in school because there are bigger repercussions than just their academics. But also, I understand the staffing isn't there. The second piece is, I was hoping we could discuss not necessarily second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, but second graders in the elementary schools, sixth graders in the middle schools and freshmen in the high schools. I don't know why they can't start at the same staggered start. I don't know why we have to open up one set of schools at a time. Oh, my gosh, she's so mean to me. I think she doesn't want the kids to go back to school. She wants them to stay here. And then the third thing is, is I have parents who are friends in other districts and just getting texts now that Merrimack is up to five COVID positive students amongst their athletic programs. So, this, this isn't far from home. This is still a risk. It's just, I think we have to start adding in the other risks in addition to COVID. I mean, there's no crystal ball and there's no right answer. And this is certainly the most challenging thing I think we all have had to deal with. But I think when we're having these discussions about when to bring the kids back into school, the timeframe of them, we need to be adding in the other risk factors that are not just COVID. And I think if we're telling students and families that we're making the decision that they need to stay home, that we as a school district take on a bit of that responsibility about their safety at home. Because it's our decision for them not to come back in. Again, theoretical, there may be no basis to that, but we have a responsibility to the safeties of these, the safety of these kids. And if we're telling them that you're doing school at home, we have an element of responsibility to their safety at home. I have no idea what I'm saying, I'm just kidding. I have no idea where we can go from here, but I really hope that this conversation expands to cover, cover other issues as we go forward. And I was really hoping that we would be doing staggered starts among each of the different grade groups. So, the idea that we're not going to have middle schoolers in until, you know, the last week of December was not some, was not what I walked away from the last meeting about. It was just an example of, and then we'll continue to readdress, but I, I, I didn't walk away from that last meeting thinking we were going one grade at a time. So, hopefully what I'm saying makes sense. I know I talk a lot. It's not to hear myself talk because, quite frankly, I don't remember what I say. But, just, we just need to make this a bigger conversation, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. There's a lot to unpack there, but I want to kind of refocus us here. The question in front of us tonight is not when certain groups of kids are going back. It's very specifically, do I get back to the construction managers and say, yes, go ahead on Fairgrounds in October? Or, no, wait a second, this is still up in the air and we're going to revisit it at our next meeting? So, if we could just kind of focus on that and then at the next meeting, really dig deeper into what the plans might look like. And that way, that gives Dr. Mosley a chance to respond to Ms. Johnson's request. It gives Dr. Mosley a chance to respond to what you were saying, Ms. Bishop. But if tonight, we could just focus on whether or not the board wants me to tell the construction managers to go ahead or hold off. Ms., I have Ms. Oden and Mr. Guarino.
Well, I'll just make it short. I agree with the past three speakers, but for me, it's more important that our kids get back to school and get their education. I like to save money. I think it's great, but I believe it was in the budget for this project to have the kids in school then. They were working around that timeline. This, they looked at possibly a bonus. But I think it hurts our kids and I'm not going to support it because I think our kids' education, I, quite frankly, I, I think much like Ms. Bishop, I think it ought to be done each level going back. I don't know why there's two weeks in between. I think there should be a week in between. And I, I know that there could be things around the corner that we're not aware of. But I think getting our kids back into school for those parents and students who chose that avenue for their students, I think we ought to honor that and try to make that happen for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Mr. Guarino?
Sure. It sounds to me as though we're talking about the construction of one school, which is Fairgrounds. However, if Fairgrounds is, if this, if the schedule is interrupted for Fairgrounds, which is middle school, and, and, and they're held up from going back in person, then we hold up the other schools too. That's what it sounds like to me is happening. But if it only affects one school, I don't see why the other schools couldn't go back when, when the schedule says they would go back, unless, I guess that's the way we're doing things. But I, I also understand that we really have to tell them before the thirteenth whether we want to accelerate the construction because by the thirteenth, our next meeting is going to be too late anyways. Am I correct in that?
Yes, they'd like to begin.
They, they need to know, okay, so.
They need to know. So, and if the answer is no, we don't know yet, that's an okay answer. I just need to get something back to them so that they're not hanging around because there's other things they could do.
Ms., Ms. Raymond, I just wanted to clarify and I'm sorry to interrupt. But I think that when they were moving up the timeline, if they don't move it up in the next two weeks, it doesn't mean they still can't move it up if we choose to keep the kids out of that building another four weeks from now. It would still be time that the kids weren't, weren't in the building, so they can still move up the timeline if that's the, what the board chooses. It just means that it's two weeks different instead of eight weeks different or six weeks differently. Does that make sense? I don't think that it was an either or. It was, they would like to get in as soon as possible. But I think Mr. Harvey was very clear that the students' needs come first.
Yes, yes, we all agree the students come first. But again, I felt like this was, we didn't have a majority of the board at that meeting. And I didn't want to comment one way or the other without the board. So, I guess the question at this point is, shall I make a motion to have them move up the timeframe? the timeframe and then have people vote on that? Yes or no? Or is there consensus on the board that we would like them to not move up the timeframe? Because that's kind of what I was thinking, I was hearing from the comments. It's difficult when we're all remote or when even one person is on the phone. Ms. Bishop?
What does administration want to do?
That's a very good question.
Thank you for asking me that, Jen. I want to go back.
Anytime.
I want to go back. I can't, I can't predict, and I'll just say, there's two conversations here. You're asking me to predict how many staff I'm going to have tomorrow. I can't do that. I can't predict what's going to happen tomorrow. I can't predict what's going on in other communities. I can't predict that by Christmas, we're not going to have a flu outbreak or someone's not going to get sick. And as I shared with the board, and the public already knows, there are nine members, there are nine students at the north that, that, that could be, that are quarantining. And we did have two students that were affected by COVID-19. Because of what we did in this district, we're still moving. We still have our extracurricular. We're still doing the things that keep our kids engaged and that's a good thing. But I cannot, if you want me to put something on writing, on paper right now, I'll put it on paper and writing right now. But I cannot predict what's going to happen a month, a month from now. What I'm saying is that if you have an opportunity to do something at, at one of our schools that allows us not to save money, but to move expeditiously, to get a construction project done in a timely manner, then we should explore it. You, you know, if, if the goal is to get all the kids back and to make sure our staff is safe as well, that is the goal for, I think, I'll speak for every superintendent in every school district in the country. I think that's what everybody wants, but we're unprecedented times. So with that said, I think this is a very difficult decision. And whatever the board decides, I will carry out, we'll, we'll do as much as we can. I think it's a good idea for us to explore this opportunity.
So I will put it to a motion then. I move to authorize the construction managers to go forward with accelerating their timeline, knowing that, well, I don't like that wording. I don't like making motions on the fly. I move to authorize the construction managers to accelerate their timeline for work at Fairgrounds School. Do I have a second for the sake of conversation?
I'll second.
Second. Did you get it, Mr. Guarino? I don't do well trying to.
Yeah, I think I have it. It's a move up, to move to authorize the construction managers to accelerate the timeframe for work at Fairgrounds School.
Oh, middle school.
Middle school.
So let's put it to a roll call and see what the board says.
Okay. Raymond Guarino votes yes. Paula Johnson?
No.
Jennifer Bishop?
Can you come back to me? Is that okay?
Yep. Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
No.
Heather Raymond?
No.
Yeah, I heard you.
Oh, sorry. I was like, am I on mute? What did I do?
I was just, no, nevermind. Dottie Oden?
No.
Gloria Timmons?
Yes.
Going back to Jessica Brown?
No, back to me.
Sorry, back to Jennifer. Jennifer.
Oh.
One, do you?
I'm going to say no.
It's not easier at the end.
Motion, it was, it would have been four to four anyways. Motion fails, three yeses and five no's. Motion fails.
Okay. All right, so I will get back to Rick Dowd and Sean Smith and let them know that I queried the board and the board does not want the timeframe to be accelerated at this time. Okay. And then the rest, that was it. That's all I wanted to know for this evening. So I would very much like to not have further discussion on the topic of kids going back to school until next meeting. Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Oh, my goodness.
On the motion?
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Brown, seconded by Ms. Gilio.
Okay, on the motion to adjourn, Raymond Guarino votes yes. Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Jennifer Bishop?
Yes.
Erin Gilio?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Heather Raymond?
Yes.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
Gloria Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. We are adjourned at 8:34 PM.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.